We'll call this meeting to order. This is a special budget meeting of the Market City Commission, Friday, August 15th. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Mayor Brooktown Stonehouse?
And Mayor Animi?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Note of any agenda changes? Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, anything further, Commissioner Ken Benzey or Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing further.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Ken Benzey, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. The only announcement I have is that we've just started our special budget meeting, but nested within our special meeting, we have a special meeting. At 9:30 a.m., we will adjourn this meeting briefly to undertake a special meeting where we'll have actual business that we approve. One is a review and recommendation of the Commission Transfication Subcommittee, and the other is approval of a resolution to create a Smart Zone Satellite and an agreement between the Cities Marquette, Hancock, and Houghton. So, at 9:30, we'll do that. Is there anyone desiring? The next section of the agenda is public comment. Anyone desiring to address the Commission? You have three minutes to do it. You have to give us your name and address. No one's here to address the Commission, so we'll proceed on. City Manager, would you like? Or, no, we have the consent agenda first. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with consent agenda? We have minutes of August 13th, 2014, special budget meeting. Commissioner Ryan?
Move the consent agenda to be approved.
Okay. Commissioner Coyne, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say yes.
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 Any Commissioner opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Now, we proceed on to new business, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Your Honor. And, just by way of kind of taking care of some administrative things, our CFO, Gary Simpson, will be joining us here in a second. We're at deadline for the public notice process associated with the eventual adoption of a budget, and he's working now with the local media to get the proper OMA publications out and taken care of. So, he'll step in as he's finished with that. Let me also start out the way I've been introducing our department heads and introducing again Director Stackowitz. I want to thank he and his staff for the hard work that they put in every day and hard work that they put into this budget. I've had the opportunity to share that with the police and fire departments. People see them when they need them. With Director Zugor, people see them as part of their quality of life and their recreation and their enjoyment of the community. Very few people get a chance to see what Director Stackowitz and his team do. It's a critical function. If you're a developer, if you want to help build the community, if you're homeowner and you want to expand your property and continue your investment, if you're any other local jurisdiction, or, in fact, starting right from the top with the strategic plans and community plans, the City Commission, his office provides the most support to all of those activities. And as you're well aware, and I hear it from residents all the time, people wonder why we weren't doing a lot of these things with better discipline and more routinely over time. Frequently, his task and the way that he manages his interface with the public comes around to, "Well, how come we didn't do this five years ago? How come we didn't do this six years ago? How come we didn't do this eight years ago?" And he has, I assure everybody, asked for authorization to control time and space. I've not gotten that in my authority to grant it to him, so, regrettably, we have to only work with what we are and where we are. But the way that we can do that more effectively is to make sure that we take some time out to think about what could be, what we're aspiring to accomplish, and that burden falls almost exclusively on his shoulders to properly document and make sure that we're reaching out to all the people that do. And I think you've seen between the community master plans, the strategic plans, the walkable streets on the Third Street corridor, all of the outreach from MISTDA, all of the outreach from the planning organizations, and the grants and investment that all these other organizations are providing to Marquette, that they have confidence we're doing it right. And so, from that perspective, I'd like to thank Director Stackowitz and his staff. They're doing a good job, and I'd like to turn it over to him to lead us through what he hopes to do in the next year.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Stackowitz, floor is yours.
Thank you, Bill. Mayor, City Commission, good morning. I will try to be brief, which is not my nature, but we'll try to get through this as quick as we can. I would also like to thank my staff. I have Keith Whittington, our city engineer, and Dave Stensis, our planner here, which is essentially the core management team for community development, and these folks are pretty much in the business of dealing with the community on the front lines, quite often dealing with community that may have a, maybe a lack of understanding about a project. So, these are the guys that go out and do the community education. And I also like to thank our frontline staff because they're the ones that take money from people and educate them about the ordinances and codes for the city of Marquette, which usually to some people seem like the answer no right from the get-go. So, it's not particularly pleasant for those folks, and they do a good job of managing relationships within the community. When we sat down to look at this budget, it was quite a challenge, as you know, is what you've been through so far and looking at the potential for 10% reductions across the board, which we were looking at. And we take a good, hard look at all avenues of how we could accomplish this, not only in particularly what we spend in making sure that we're being responsible to the community, but also making sure that there's a situation of equity within the community in terms of what things we have in our department that were particularly being subsidized by the general fund without, that could possibly made up. And one of the things we looked at was our fee schedule, and we had done some investigation over that over the years, and we tried to keep the cost somewhat low. That's been the direction in the community to make it accommodating. But after we looked at it this year, between planning, zoning, and engineering, our fees, we were actually receiving about a $62,000 subsidy from the general fund within our fee schedule alone. And particularly, that comes from a lot of the larger site plan reviews that we do. That's a really big thing that we do in our department. It's important to the community. It's a relatively new process for us in that we're only about nine years or eight years into doing site plan review, and we do it internally. In a lot of communities, just to set a background, they don't do it, even though they have staff. They send it out to consulting firms such as UPEA or someone along those lines, and the actual cost of the service is what the consultant cost is. That could be $2,000. What we were sitting at, you know, we were charging for a site plan review right around $200. With the staff time we spent on that, our break-even cost is around $1,700, which we found to be comparable. We did do some comparables and look at other communities in the Upper Peninsula, similar size and stature to us, which, wink, wink, Sue Sainte-Marie, right? There's not many that are above very similar to Marquette, but we consider them somewhat of a benchmark. We did look locally as well. I don't think we have a lot of comparison there, but, so, in essence, one of the things we did was we took a good, hard look at those fees and calculated out the actual cost of the service and brought each one of those fees up to that. In some cases, it's a doubling of the fee, where you had a signed permit that cost $81, would now cost $130 for someone to do that. In the case of site plan review, you're looking at a big jump of, you know, $200 to $1,700, but it's a cost-of-service situation, and we felt that it would be worthy to bring this to the Commission's attention for consideration as a possible way to solve that subsidy.
Let me also give a sense. From our discussions on these break-even, if you take a look at other comparables, and maybe Dennis, you want to chat about this, you're speaking about what the permitting fee would be on several hundred thousand dollars or several million dollars' worth of project development. So, this isn't what would be necessarily passed along to a homeowner, but it would be passed along to something like Granite Point or Horizon Farms, the entire PUD, not just any individual resident.
But, that's a very good point. I could elaborate on that very shortly. I mean, then, most certainly, that does include cost into your business pro forma, but again, when you're looking at a business pro forma of, you know, let's take the Liberty Way Development, $34 million investment, your construction costs and whatnot on top of that, this most certainly gets factored into it. But it really comes down to, you know, the way we looked at it is we found what we considered to be a pretty significant gap with a $60,000 shortfall in there that maybe we can make up a little bit of that, so we would ask for consideration on it. That's my little spiel on it. You know, if I can go through line by line on the fee schedule if you want, everyone's been presented with it, or I could hit the highlights of what the major, if you could, I'll go through it and hit the highlights of what the major increases would be.
Ask where it is. I know what's in here somewhere, but isn't it?
The fee schedule. Yes.
Which, what, what?
Page 20 starts Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Department. We start out under Board of Zoning Appeals, the variances in the Class A non-conforming. A good portion of this keeps up with the advertising requirements. Now, there's some legislation that is pending that, you know, may eliminate the newspaper out of this, but currently, we do the best we can, and we do the legal notices in the paper, but there's still associated costs with that and the staff costs associated. That's one that's been subsidized for a number of years, so that would increase to $500. The special meetings cost in there that we have, actually, I have that highlighted. We need to take a look at that. We'll skip over that because I think that can be reduced a little bit. In the zoning department, we have fence permits, sign permits. Those are done internally. They're done by our planning and zoning official. The fees that we've had do not reflect the time that goes into that. When you're dealing with this activity, you need to, particularly with a signed permit, you need to go out and verify what's on site, and all of these are ordinance-related activities that our staff are doing. The ordinance requires that we have, we go out and verify that the existing signs are of a certain placement, and then you calculate those into a very complex formula, and then you come with your outputs and decide whether that can be approved or not. We do see a reduction in the next section where a couple of the-
The sign permit, Dennis. You have, we have two lines there, 130 and 81. What is the difference between the two amounts?
Yeah, one, it must be a type on here. One is a commercial level, and the other one is the sidewalk sign.
Okay.
Under demolition permit, we see a reduction in most except for the accessory structure. The reason we require a fee for a demolition permit is because we have utilities connected to the major structures in the city. If you have a residential or a commercial, we need to send, I think it's Larry Lina that goes out and does the, makes sure that the disconnect is done properly so there's no harm done to our system. Zoning compliance, we've kept those fees for the smaller stuff, bringing them up a little bit. We didn't necessarily bring that to cost of service for the smaller things because we quite simply don't do a lot of them. The ones that we do are the larger ones, over 500 square feet, and a lot of the additions and alterations for residential homes and structures and paving, we do quite a bit of those, so we've brought those up. The next line item is site plan review, which is where we have been providing a lot of effort for a very low cost for a number of years. And when we do a site plan review in the city, sometimes we are, we receive some critical comments from the development community that the process is somewhat tedious and it can be onerous, and there's a lot of requirements associated with it. But we have to remember that it's not necessarily about telling someone where they can put their building. It's about the protection of critical assets in the city, and a lot of what goes into site plan review, although this is reflected on the zoning department, is coordination between our engineering department and the developers' engineer to ensure that the onsite utility infrastructure that they're placing is not going to cause undue harm to a city system and therefore place a larger burden on the rest of the community. So, there is a lot of review that happens. We assemble a review team of the police department, fire department, engineering department, public works, planning and zoning, to, they all do a review of a site plan, provide their comments, meet with the developer and their representative, discuss the comments. Developer and their representative often come back with a second design that gets reviewed again by our team. So, there's a lot of staff effort that goes into it. Very important process for the community. Along with the revised site plans, that's the same thing. Whenever revision comes in, we assemble the team for that. Our fines under Civil Infractions Bureau, that's particularly a component of community development that brings much love to our department, is when we have to enforce ordinances. The fees are set by ordinance, and therefore, there was no change there. Any change to these fees would need to be reviewed, but these fees are consistent with municipal civil infractions across Michigan's 50, 100, 150, and then it escalates up to $500 a day.
Dennis, when we're, especially the site plan review for the PUDs, is that a single fee? They're not going to get clipped with another fee if they change it?
Oh, that's, that's a single fee. That carries you through the-
In the past, I think that's happened, and I think in the past, I think it's been said, "Well, it's a minor change that they don't have to pay a whole new fee," so.
Yeah, we deal with this as a, this site plan review, that $1,730 takes you through the entire process.
So, if there are changes, they're not going to have to pay it again and et cetera?
That's right. Now, when we get into the planning fees, which will be coming later, there is a, there are some amendment fees, but that's for, you know, if you had something approved and then two years down the road, you'd need to make a change to it, then there's some administrative review costs associated with that.
Is it the same, or is it, is it taken into account that a lot of the review has already been accomplished, or?
Most of those, all of those fees are lower because of the initial review that occurred.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I have a-
I'm sorry.
I would guess the strongest negative feedback we might get would be additions, alterations, or accessory structure and paving, 250 square feet or less, fee going from like $29 to $120 or $56 to $120. You know, I can see a developer factoring it into their building costs. I think a lot of homeowners are going to probably have some objections to these fees. How do we, what is the justification for what we're doing there? What happens in a, if somebody does a paving of 250 square feet or less that we would have to charge $120 for?
Well, that we have to, that requires a multiple department review, again, by ordinance. Our city code provides that that gets reviewed and approved by planning to ensure that it meets the zoning ordinance standards for driveways or parking lots, and then the paving off-street parking requires also by ordinance that the city engineer review it and sign off it as well. So, we have the, you know, the actual time and cost to do that review.
You also, depending on the kind of alteration, you have the fire inspections, you have the other utility inspectors coming by. There could be subsurface utilities relocated that have to be considered in whatever part of the site plan is maybe impacting those. So, any one of these, any one of these fees that you're seeing, we've been greatly, greatly subsidizing those over the course of the last several decades, and as part of the zero-based review, this is really the first time, to my understanding, from looking back at the city records, that a department head has actually gone back and tried to figure out what the cost of providing that would be. But it's not just a simple, and this, again, is kind of speaking to how I opened this morning. This is an area that a lot of people don't really see the effort on the surface and what goes into these costs. They walk in, they file their paperwork, and they write a check, and they just kind of assume at that point that it's being taken care of, but there are at least, for all of these permits, three or four different departments involved to make sure that what's being proposed isn't going to create negative impacts for the rest of the community.
And, just if I could clarify really quick, the reason it shows up in this fee schedule, even though it's multi-department, is we've made community development and particularly the planning and zoning counter the clearinghouse for development in the community.
Commissioner Coyne?
Dennis, I have two questions. With your fee increases, I just, while you were talking, kind of tried to figure out on this page 20, how much it would increase in revenue. It was about $15,000. That's just rough, but you have other fees that are going to increase, and you had a goal of trying to reduce the $60,000 subsidy.
Yeah, the total fee for cost of service and planning and zoning was $41,708, but we'll be getting to the planning fees a little bit later when we go through this. Engineering was about $21,000. That's the next one that we'll take a look at.
So, you're going to try, you think you'll meet the $60,000 subsidy?
Yes.
Okay, the next question I have is, you mentioned in your presentation that other engineering firms could do some of the site plan reviews and charge, have you thought about that, outsourcing that, and then lessening the burden, if that's true, on your department?
We've looked at that over time, the ability to possibly contract out some of that work. One of the issues that we run into is labor situation on how that's established and some of the positions that we have being within a bargaining unit that are actually tasked with that work in their job description. But that is, that challenge can be looked at if it were indeed the highest and best expenditure for the community to do something like that. And typically, what we find is that we are really more efficient and responsive to the developer and have a quicker turnaround time if we do it in-house because we have the clearer understanding of the municipal system. And every, you know, our, it's a very complex system, and there are some nuances. There are some things that although on paper, you know, this is a six-inch main, well, the city engineer and his staff may know, "Yeah, it's a six-inch water main, but three blocks down there, it's off of this site plan, you know, three blocks down this way, there might be a little bit of a problem, so please consider this." And that, that type of institutional knowledge makes this process go a lot quicker. It's more responsive to the developer, and with a system as complex as ours, I still think that we can provide this service at a lesser cost.
Yeah. I think, also, Dennis, I think you would all still have to go through the plans and the engineering report and understand the project to be able to make your determinations within our requirements and our code, so we're probably not going to gain a lot by doing that.
That's a good point.
Maybe sometime, but, yeah. City Manager?
Thank you. Yeah, we've had very extensive discussions about this, and you get to a point where there's a substantial amount of the work that goes on in engineering that's just the pure data, data crunching, number crunching, plan reviews and things like that, but there are a lot of judgment calls in the as-built world, and you don't want to have any question of motive in how those calls are made. And frequently, you're making decisions about, if you're looking at laterals and something's wrong, who's going to bear the cost? Will the city absorb the cost, or is this something that's legitimately part of a vendor cost? You're looking at things where, and in particular, some of the more exotic projects we have, where they're public-private partnerships, things under the Brownfield Project, for example, you're looking at who and what and how should those cost burdens be shared, who and what and how over time is going to sustain the maintenance for those facilities or for those assets. And if you don't have city staff doing that, then you're automatically putting yourself in a position where you have to take extra steps to mitigate the potential that there are other motives that might play into that judgment. So, I know from a, and you've seen it many times in your, in your actions, as we, as we are challenged by capacity from time to time, we certainly reach out and work with area engineering firms, but at some point, there's a fundamental and inherent government responsibility to do some of this work, and I think our engineering department does that very cost-effectively.
One question I had, Dennis, on when we talk about this fee additions or alterations, structure and paving 250 square feet or less, I understand that the paving that you're defining, if a person has the structure up and then years later goes by and does the paving, do they then have to get another permit for that, or is that?
You know, typically-
Say they have a gravel parking lot, they want to put 250 square feet of paving to the garage that they built.
We review those on a case-by-case basis. Something like that may fall into, may fall into a lower category or something different. Generally, when people are doing that, they do it all at once. I'm trying to think of a particular situation where somebody may have done one and then came back a couple months later and done the other, and it generally doesn't occur that way, but that's a good point, a point well taken. That's food for thought.
Okay, thank you.
If I can, I'd like to move on to page 24.
Commissioner Benzey has a question.
A few comments and a few questions. I agree, I would not want to contract this work out. I mean, it's our inventory. We know it inside and out, and I just don't think outside firm would have any advantage. I am a little bit worried as we're trying to promote more economic development in the community that the site plan review and the revised site plan review, that increase is huge in one year. Have you thought about a two-year, kind of a scaled increase in this?
I guess that may be an option for the Commission to discuss. Again, our task was to, you know, when we looked at it, we were going to bring it up and present to the Commission what we thought would be something that would be break-even for us, so I'm sure that's worthy of further discussion if so desired.
I mean, I, being on the Planning Commission, I clearly see the work that goes into it, and I know how frustrating it is when you get junk plans that come in that are incomplete and the time that takes for staff to go through, send them back. So, I do think increasing the fee will get the private sector to do it right the first time. I think there's a lot of merit in this and raising the fees to what it costs. I'm just worried that this jump is huge.
Well, Your Honor, Commissioner Ken Benzey, we had that same discussion administratively, but again, this isn't for a retail kind of one-off homeowner. This would be the fee, for example, if Duke Life Point decides to build in the city. We're talking about on their $200 million development, you know, moving the fee from $200 to $1,700. That's not even on a level of rounding error in the grand scheme of things, or if there was another Liberty Way project, or if there was something on that class. And so, from our discussion, we were looking at, and this was to, kind of what I was teasing out from Dennis, you know, what would be a comparable, comparable experience that a developer might have if they were in some other part of the state or some other part of the community, or, excuse me, some other part of the country. And I think, Dennis, you were telling me, was it San Diego, was it Los Angeles? One of the sites that you were looking at, the PUD review fee is $25,000. of the sites that you were looking at, the PUD review fee is $25,000.
Actually, that was Chief Belt. He had a relative in, out in San Diego that built a house, and it was over $40,000 before they even had a set of plans in hand to construct a home.
So, so depending on, depending on, of course, where you are in the country, you can have these pretty, pretty broad experiences. But for the type of people who would be coming in doing these kind of planned unit developments and the actual dollar value associated with those, it's been our experience, there's probably only really five entities in the community that routinely submit PUD-type plans. And there's probably only two or three active at any given time. So-
Well, I'm looking at the-
We were looking at the impact of it, and, you know, again, thinking, would this have a broad community impact, or would this be really focused? And would it be consistent with the kind of scale of investment that would, you know, potentially offset that cost? And so that's why we thought we could probably get it done in one year.
It looks like there's about 20 last year that happened, site plan reviews.
Correct.
So these aren't all Duke LifePoints, these are business owners choosing here or close by, maybe?
Yeah, these are, but these are larger commercial projects, and I'm sure that Duke LifePoint was just an example, but we have a site plan review for, you know, Citco Gas Station on Lincoln Avenue was completely redone, which is pretty important, it's on a corner, a lot of traffic, that was one worthy of consideration. We had a brand-new, multiple-unit apartment complex on McClellan by the children's daycare there that was pretty complex. In fact, we're, that one was complex enough with utilities that we're still dealing with neighborhood residents over a concern of how the stormwater is, may possibly be affected in that area by that site. And there's a lot of follow-up that goes with it. So I know the Duke LifePoint might be the extreme example, but it's rather accurate. You know, most of these investments you're, you're looking at now, you know, that apartment complex, I'm sure that had to be close to a million dollars. So these are pretty significant projects. A homeowner generally wouldn't undergo site plan review. They would fall under the zoning compliance fee category for what they're doing. It would be something similar to the apartments on South McClellan across from the transfer station that went, the new transfer station, that went through a site plan review that was pretty significant.
What does, like, what does a township charge for these fees?
They did not have a fee schedule available, and I wasn't able to connect with them, but I know for years, and they may very well still do this, they had contracted with Joe Wasi of ECI to do all of their site plan review with them, and their site plan reviews would take about 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
The characterization for the, the site plan review is right under the, right under the label. So you can see, commercial, industrial, residential with three or more units, and then final PUDs. So, so these aren't kind of the retail-level consumers. These are the, these are the professional developers who come in.
Commercial would be retail, though. Retail would be-
Yeah, no, exactly. But commercial could also be wholesale, it could be services.
If we could put a parameter of value on the project, would that, would that work? Because I, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with getting, covering our full costs, especially on large projects, but I'm just thinking of a small project that could fall in those classifications, it could be a real imposition, especially if there's a, you know, the revised plan, they clip for another $1,400. I don't know if there's a way to do that or not.
The way that it's done in the building codes world, which is not something that we administer, it's administered by the county, they use a plan review factor based upon category of development, but, you know, that gets pretty complex, and it's based upon the Michigan State Building Code and the factorization that goes along with that. I'm not, you know, that's something we could most certainly consider if we were directed to do so, but it would make things rather complex.
Yeah, the only other thing really to get that variation would be just to charge them an hourly rate, but that's not certain. You know, there could be, there could be even for small homeowners, if they've got some kind of challenges with the lot or with the subsurface infrastructure, with something could end up paying more than that, more than what's on the fee schedule if we're just charging them our actual time. You could potentially charge a base rate plus hours, I suppose, if you're, if you want to lower the, lower the fees to begin with, but these are the break-even costs of service.
Now, one of the things that we looked at is a comparable, we're a community, and this happens to be Sioux St. Marie, their initial fee for commercial is $1,750, and then they tack on a site, a plan review factor based upon some of those building code numbers, so that could increase significantly. You know, one of the things, and the way that can increase significantly is, an example, when we were, you know, we've been discussing some things with Duke LifePoint, and one of the questions they had asked is, what is a plan review fee, you know? And it turns out, they were inquiring about building codes. Well, we looked into it just to check it out, and I think Mayor, you might remember, it was about a quarter of a million dollars review fee, just for the plan review on that, on that hospital loan, using their factorization.
Let me also offer, Your Honor, as far as the fees go, it's been a pretty common experience for me since I've been here, where the commission frequently on a lot of these developments waives them. You know, the people who are coming in and wanting to do the development come in and say, we'd love to do this, but we don't want to pay the fee. And the commission says, okay, you don't have to pay the fee. And you have, you have that authority for anybody who might want to come in, whether, whether they're asking for it as part of the deal, or whether they're asking for it because they, they feel it's unfair and they're looking for relief. So these fees are very tailorable to what the commission might do, or completely eliminaible by what the commission might do.
I understand that, but some people will realize that they can do that, other people won't realize that they can do that, and will end up paying the fee. And there's, I'm sure, you know, Dave could probably think of some projects that come in that just won't make sense under this, this structure, that, you know, you could, well, one, one example is the bed and breakfast, that, it's a small project. If they have a revised site plan, it could be a, it could be just a simple, very minor revision, but because you people are administrators, you can't vary fees, you're going to have to clip them for $1,400 for a revised site plan because it's a developer-initiated change. And I don't know what the answer is for, but, you know, there's either that, or maybe the fee schedule should say that, you know, can, can be advised on the appeal to the commissioner. There's got to be some, I, I agree with increasing it to cost of service, but there, you know, there's got to be some way to, to, to those that are, you know, that it's just not going to make sense to make sense of it.
So I guess we need to moot the commission on this one, because this was the exact same debate yesterday on park and recreation and the cost of service, and-
Well, it wasn't quite the exact same debate, it was a similar debate.
It was, we heard the, we heard the same discussion about trying to get to a point where we were getting everybody fairly paying for the cost of, of what it takes the city to do these things, and what we've proposed as the cost of service to do these things, we're, we're speaking now to the issues of fairness in the view of the commission, and that's something we can't, we can't contribute to.
Okay, so you could have a, you could have a bed and breakfast, and they're going to put in three lights on their site instead of two lights. And so they now revise the site plan, the developer has revised that site plan, what is the cost of service of looking at that additional?
Actually, in that, in that instance, our ordinance provides that if the changes are less than 2,000 square feet or 20% of the overall development, there's no-
Additional fee?
No additional review required. I mean, these can be administratively discretion decisions that are done by the zoning administrator, and that's why we put that clause in there, so somebody doesn't have to come back and go through the process. And in that case, we've, we've had instances where the zoning administrator, who happens to be Dave as well, would use a discretion of saying, you know, okay, well, you're going to have three lights, now you're only going to have two, let's get out your approved plan, let's take a pen, cross this light out, we draw two on here, it's initialed by both of us, we sign off on it this date, and the ordinance allows that flexibility to be done. So there's a certain level of, dare I say, common sense, but, I mean, that we do use that type of administrative discretion.
In those cases where, where it doesn't trigger that, then they can come to us for, for relief.
And we can certainly, and you've seen frequently when folks come in and do that, we advise the commission upfront through 24-hour response requirements, we suggest that they come in and speak at public comment or otherwise petition, and we'll continue to do that. And we can add to the fee schedule or to the desk practice in the community development department, that same proviso, that when the public comes in for these kind of activities, that they're advised of the opportunity to do that.
That satisfies me. Any, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, you know, I think it comes down to, you know, we want to encourage people to do things. You know, we want development, you know, we want people to improve their properties. We don't want it to appear like we're putting roadblocks in their path. You know, and I think you're proposing something reasonable, but I think, you know, I agree with the mayor, too, that as long as some person with a little project doesn't get, you know, sidetracked with $5,000 in fees and say, this, man, this, this isn't going to work. You know, and I, I will, I'll say this, too, you know, I think Marquette in the past had a reputation of not always being responsive to developers, and I think we're changing that reputation, and I think, Dennis, you and your staff have, have been positive in that, in that regard. So I know you understand that's important, and I think that's all we're saying. You know, we're not, you know, we understand where, where you're coming from, that these are services, I'm sure you're incurring these costs, I have no doubt about that, but we just don't, you know, we don't want to put roadblocks in the way of people doing good things in our community as far as development goes. And so, you know, I think the point is, if it's a, obviously, if it's a huge project, this is a drop in the bucket, this is nothing. But it's when you get down at the lower end that it could become a factor.
I understand that, particularly the person in the trenches that also works hand-in-hand with these developers to find them incentives and create partnerships, so most certainly the phone is going to be ringing on my end, and I'm going to hear my fair share of it as well. But I think that, you know, we, we can educate and use a little bit of common sense here as well.
By the way, when I first campaigned, I campaigned on the theme of common sense, so I mean, it is important. And I think that's the problem, you know, at any time in government that you write a rule, you know, and then someone says, well, no, this is what the rule says, you know, and so we just hope that when situations arise, people can say, yeah, the rule says that, but there's some ways we can work with you on this.
Let me offer that, we hear you loud and clear, and, and when we're under this new budgeting process that we've taken, you'll have established times when, when you're looking at the expenditures, you can also have an established time to look at the fees, and we'll be tracking this, and we'll be able to provide all the feedback. I suspect independently, if there's a huge human cry, you'd be hearing it outside of this process because there'd be a number of 24-hour response requirements, or reports from community office hours, or other kinds of things where people are coming in and sharing their views. But they're not, we had an extensive discussion to make sure that, to the extent possible, we were, we were suggesting the lowest possible fees to try to still provide the same level of cost of service and cover cost. And if it comes back, and it's part of a, part of a broader economic strategy to, to lower these and continue some level of subsidization to encourage this kind of activity, we're certainly aware of that, and we'll be tracking that, too, and we'll come back and, and make that recommendation if we need to.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
My only comment would be, I certainly can support the fee structure as, as you presented it, I think it's a reasonable approach to it, but I would ask you, too, as Commissioner Ryan spoke, I think, of doing it with a real element of common sense in terms of the scope and the scale of the project being requested. It's certainly one thing to, to work with a, a large developer where money is less important than it is with a smaller homeowner that might be doing some work on his garage or putting in a driveway and that type of thing. So that would be my concern, and to make sure, again, that we're taking care of our citizens at the lowest level we can, and still keep a good reputation in the city for development, so. And I'm, I'm sure that that's what we, what our intention is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Just one last quick comment. I, I don't want to be the one where everyone's coming to us every other meeting saying, well, we only want to pay $600, or we only think we should be paying whatever, half this. I'd rather have it taken care of in the fee structure and kind of what it is for everyone it is. But I agree, I think there are some projects that come through site plan review where we're lucky to get those projects in the city, because they could very easily go to the township or somewhere else. So I just, I want to be cognizant of, of what we're doing, because it is taxable income for a long time for us if we get these projects and get the development, so that's just my comment. I don't want to be the determining factor up here every month for these.
Anything else? Anyone?
Proceed. Okay, we've got about 13 minutes to get through the rest of these fee schedules. We're going to go to page 24 on engineering. These are all bringing cost up to par, and a lot of our maps and, and data that we provide to the community, the fees where they were set at really weren't even covering the cost of the paper. So we factored that in. We also looked at, when you get down to individual data projects, that refers to our geographic information systems data. You know, our previous cost of $100 for that was based upon the initial build-out of the system. Since then, we've, you know, we've had reduction in our cost over time, with the exception of the ortho photos that we fly, but our department has been doing a, Keats Department in engineering has been doing a really good job of finding us some cost savings on those projects, which we were able to pass along on some of those data requests. The big thing, the significant thing to note in here is, under permits, is we have community event fee for an individual, or for, for a new community event, or for an annual type of event. And our engineering department spends quite a bit of time setting up assistance with these type of projects, and we did research in other communities to see what they charge for this type of activity. Generally, they charge by the hour on top of an initial fee, so they may have a $150 processing fee for the event, just to do the PSAs and everything else, and then they charge by the hour for any particular type of city assistance that's needed, whether that's the public works department setting up barricades, police needing to direct traffic flow, or engineering controls that may be put into place.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I can see that's going to be fodder for our promotion program right off the bat, because there are going to be a lot of people coming in here saying, well, we're not going to do a race if we have to spend $660 for a fee. So it's just the way things are. And, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but many of these events are run by charity organizations, so.
We, we understand that, we fully expect they'll be coming in and asking for fee relief as well. In that particular regard, we expect we'll still be using the promotion ordinance to recommend all the same things we've done. You might see some variation in the level of fee relief to reflect this, but we're hopeful that, that all nets out, and it really just becomes an issue for Gary and his bookkeeping as opposed to continuing to support those events in the community.
It'll be Dennis and Carl fighting whose fees get, who loses the fee.
Again, and, you know, part of the exercise is, when we go through this budget, from my perspective, as Bill said, I think for the, you know, the residents that may be watching this and not entirely sure of what Stackwitz does, or his people do, or whatnot, they're, part of it is creating awareness that we do a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and it's reflected in this fee schedule, and that we do a lot for these community events as well. If we can, I'd like to move on to page 32.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got to go back to the, to the community event fees, because it strikes me that what's going to happen, as Commissioner Ryan alluded- going to happen, as Commissioner Ryan alluded to, is that we're just going to see this thing come back again, asking for fee relief, that we are going to probably grant. So that given, why are we putting it in? Because all we're really creating is community angst, people getting excited about something that ultimately would be relieved theoretically anyway.
This largely is going to cover both the ones that routinely get promotion relief, and it's going to cover ones that don't. And typically, for the ones that you see in the promotional events, those are pretty well-established events in the community, they go through this process year after year after year. They have very strong volunteer bases that actually do a lot of the background work, work with city staff, work with the police department, work with the DPW to make sure that things happen. And then there are a lot of groups that come in with an idea, and then just dump that all on city staff, and they certainly can ask for promotional relief, it's something that gets forwarded to the city commission. But there are an awful lot of event organizers that come in with an idea, and then expect just the city to do it as though it were city programming as opposed to their volunteer event. And I suspect those are going to be the ones that wouldn't necessarily get recommended for fee relief, and this would help offset the cost of all the rest of that, should the city decide they want to support that activity.
I'm just not comfortable with it, but thank you for the explanation.
Anything further, commissioners? Proceed. Oh, I'm sorry. Dave?
Just sitting here listening to it, I mean, you just can't continue to give away everything, I mean, you've got to cover your costs. You know, I, you know, if you've got an established cost, that's what it should be. I mean, you just can't give it away, you're going to lose money. I mean, you've got to have consideration, I guess. You want events to keep coming here, but you just can't keep giving stuff away. We're giving, you know, you have a fee, and then you give it away, so what's, what's the point? Why even have a fee? I think if you have a fee, you've got to work from that fee. I mean, if that's your cost of doing something, be it a site plan, be it an event plan, I just, you know, you can't, you can't run a business that way. You got, you know, you just can't keep giving stuff away. That's how I feel. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Further, commissioners? Proceed, Mr. Stackwitz.
Page 32 will wrap up our fee schedule. These are planning fees, and through the accounting purposes, they show up in a different part of the, of the fee schedule, but these are for some of your non-recurring, not, you know, you may only have a couple of these a year, but rezoning fees, street vacations, I don't believe we've seen a, vacating a platted street for about eight years, but that, that process actually involves the clerk's office, as well as community development, engineering, planning, planning commission, public hearing, city commission, public hearing, and so on. And the rest of these, the conditional use permits have gone up, and these are because with the conditional use permit, once you get above one and two family residential units, so that may be a one, say, in a single-family home, somebody wants to have a daycare for three or four kids, that falls under that one or two residential. We have somebody who pops popcorn in their garage and, you know, trucks it out and sells it, that, that type of activity is one or two family. But when you get into a group daycare situation or others, the zoning ordinance requires a site plan review to be associated with that. So we've taken the site plan review fee, which again requires the semblance of the entire team, and then kind of just factored in a little bit more, $30 actually, of the, of the staff cost associated with that. The planned unit developments, these are extremely complex, in that essentially what a planned unit development is, is an approval of something that's contrary to the zoning ordinance, or may not have been anticipated or zoned for. They're typically larger projects. If you recall, the Founder's Landing Project, the entire thing was a planned unit development. That's a pretty significant development that a lot of review goes in with, so we see an increase in those fees as well. Site condominium is basically a subdivision. We still have plats and subdivisions listed on here, because the state requires we do it. I cannot recall a plat being done in the city of Marquette in the past 13 years. They've basically been done as site condominiums.
Primo, is Primo the last one? Primo have?
Primo's peak two, and we are awaiting final plat approval on that.
Have any of your fellow department heads started looking at this revenue that you're glomming onto, and thinking of getting some of it?
I'm already spinning. Sorry to spin.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Just on the plat subdivision, I mean, depending on what we do with the Hartwood as years go on, you know, there could be more of these. Just curious about, you know, if the actual cost is 70305, why do we charge more?
Because there are, with the plat, there are additional costs incurred that generally would fall under, previously had fallen under administrative services or other things, but you have to go to the city commission as well with these. So when my staff figured out this cost of service, these numbers here are generally for community development staff as well, and I think it's duly noted that I could update these to reflect the entire city cost for these particular projects, because they go above and beyond, they start going into city commission and legislative accounts.
And just out of curiosity, does the city then handle the plats going for state approval, or is that, I mean, do these have any?
Yeah, the, if, if we had a plat that were, would come in, it would be a preliminary review, it would go through planning commission, city commission, then we would escort it to the state. The developer actually does that, but we sign off on it, it goes to the state. When it comes back to the state, then we go through the same process again. The state then sends it back to the city clerk, where we become the custodians of the plat itself, the mayor signs off on it, and then we distribute it from there. So we are tied into the process with the state.
Okay. I, maybe just for the community, the break-even fee is, is probably a lot higher, I'm guessing, with all that.
That's all I have.
Can you get through pages 89, 92 in two minutes?
Sure thing.
We can do it, we can do it. He can do it, we can do it.
Well, along, along with, you know, finding $60,000 in fees, we also did take note and provide for some cuts in, in our department. This is engineering department, engineering is responsible for taking the ideas of the community and putting them into plans and forms that can, can be constructed. I'd like to just go through, if we could, I'm sure the programs, statistics, and everything that they've done, utilities, you know, they've placed, replaced over 5,000 linear feet of water main, extended or replaced sanitary sewer main, 17,000 linear feet, 3,000 linear feet of storm sewer, they've reconstructed over 6,000 linear feet of street overlaid, 8,000 feet. There, there's a lot of work going on in the community, and I would encourage, I know the commissioners have seen it, but anybody in the community to take a look at that when they go through the budget, to see the amount that, that really goes through this. As far as expenditures, I'm just going to briefly highlight, rather than, you know, going through the numbers, but we did provide a reduction in overtime by 50%, which is a savings of almost $12,000 to this portion of the general fund. We've worked with DPW to reduce some of the charges on vehicles, usage, and buildings, and we found some savings in there that would help us reduce the cost in this department. Some of our wages are allocated as fixed charges to other departments. We have some standing commitments under, under 801, which is required for specialized work, particularly most of that is wetland monitoring. We found some significant savings in wetland monitoring, we've been able to work with the county conservation district and have them do some of the work for us, and that we've, we've realized some savings in that. But again, that, that goes back to the unfunded mandates that come from the state of Michigan and the federal government, that we have to do wetland monitoring for road construction, and it's not something that we can basically walk away from. So that's a commitment that we have to do. And then we have a capital cost, robotic total station survey equipment, basically that's for the surveyor. The, the equipment we have needs to be replaced, and we need to modernize it.
Quick?
Just looking at the retirement MERS, it's kind of eye-opening how it's doubled. Is there, are we hanging on to a lot of retirees in that, or?
No, that goes to our previous discussions, actually going back to the CFO forecast in the first night, where the laws have changed as to how the actuarial people have to determine what the city's cost is for these systems, because they're underfunded. And so we're going to see this for this kind of spike. Hopefully, it's kind of leveled off, we're hopefully at the high end, and then it's probably going to be, you know, maybe four to five years, and then maybe we can see some of, starting to start trickling down a little bit. But this is all the result of the, as we've talked about, you know, many times before, just the new requirements that are coming down as to how municipalities have to present these liabilities, and how they have to be funded through the actuarial studies.
We are recessing and going into another special meeting. Okay. Is there a second? Mayor Protem Stonehouse, it's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Mayor Protem Stonehouse to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. I have no announcements. Public comment? We have an opportunity for the public to comment. No public wants to comment, so we'll move on. New business? Review report and recommendation from, from the Commission Transportation Subcommittee regarding the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of Marquette and the Marquette County Road Commission. Does the clerk have anything, or does the city manager?
Your honor, let me just maybe tee it off to give everybody an update. The city, the city, the city commission met with the subcommittee to get an update on the, on the different issues associated with the truck route ordinance. At that time, the subcommittee also presented a inter-local agreement that had been forwarded for consideration by the Marquette County Road Commission. There was robust dialogue, and the task was placed on the city attorney and I to go back and capture that dialogue, and to update this agreement with the city counter. For the inter-local agreement, the discussion was specifically related to the sunrise provision as opposed to a sunset provision, and I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Protem Stonehouse, maybe to lead the commission through, through their discussion.
Well, I think all of us certainly are in agreement that the bypass is a very important objective for the city, as well as Marquette Township, and really, everybody along the corridor. This agreement only affects, if you will, the city contribution towards the effort to make that bypass happen. It does not obligate the city for funding in any way, it does not obligate the city to determine which bypass would be used or how it would be constructed. The construction of that bypass is solely and completely within the province of Marquette County Road Commission. The agreement that, not the agreement, the tentative agreement that came from the road commission after our discussion at the bypass meeting, essentially identified three different objects, three different objectives. Number one, that the city would open a north-south truck route unspecified, only when the county had assured that it has the funding and all construction permits in place for construction of the bypass. The bypass is unidentified. There's four of them in play, you might remember from the map that we had in our work session. It is hopefully desirable that the one most extreme to the west be constructed, but that's, again, not our ballywick, that's the road commission's ballywick. The other item that is critical for us is that the city would agree not to have a truck ordinance take effect for a period of two years. And the intention of that period of two years is that it would allow the construction of the bypass within that period. Once the bypass is constructed, it is believed, it is our operating hypothesis, that most of the truck traffic along Wright Street, and then McClellan, McClellan being an obvious choice for a bypass, would simply go away because of the value of the bypass and picking up that traffic. So that's the, really, the crux of this, this agreement. There's a couple of items with it. This is an agreement that would be made between the city and the Marquette County Road Commission. It involves no other governmental entities. In other words, we sign with the road commission, and they with us. The road commission, at the same time, would make a collateral agreement with Marquette Township and Nagani Township. The Marquette Township agreement essentially saying that the township would agree not to put any road restrictions on Wright Street within the township. So those are the two elements then that come together. And what we're asking you to do, what we're recommending that we as a commission vote on and do, is forward this agreement, this suggestive agreement to the Marquette County Road Commission for their approval.
I'm sorry. Any, Commissioner Ryan?
I just have a couple of questions, probably legal questions. Did we draft this, or is this from the county road?
This came originally from the county road commission as a, less well-crafted document, if you will, from Jim. And then in turn, Ron has looked at it and put this package together. So this has been vetted by our attorney.
Just one point, you know, it says the parties agree that the funding should come from outside sources, the party's normal funding, and I agree with that.
Yes.
But then the second part says that parties agree that no portion of the cost or expense directly or indirectly related to the permitting, design, or construction of the bypass shall be the responsibility of or borne by the city or board. It seems to be redundant from the first one, but my question is, you know, I mean, if you get some point in the future when spending $25,000 would get you the bypass, does this prevent you from doing that? The way this is written?
The way it's written, the parties can always agree to modify this contract, that's what it is.
All right, that's all.
Yeah, and they get to a point where, as you say, they both decide that it makes no sense not to have a modification of this agreement, it can be very easily done.
Okay. Because, you know, if you get down the road and you've got a $10 million bypass, and you have to spend some small amount of money to make it happen.
Yeah, I think it would be in the interest of both parties to do that, and I don't think that the city manager wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, did you?
I was just going to extrapolate on that, and in the same manner, nothing would prevent any future commission from extending this agreement, should we think that we're within several months or a very short period of time of achieving the end game.
Okay. The other question is that the city agrees to adopt a truck route ordinance that will take effect two years after date of adoption, no earlier than August 1st, 2016. I'm looking at item three on page two. Then it says, "If permitting and funding for the bypass are secured prior to August 1st, 2016, the city shall designate a north-south truck route as soon as practically possible."
Yes.
Again, these items seem to be in conflict with each other.
I don't think they are, I think what we're saying is we won't, we'll adopt a truck route ordinance no earlier than that date, but if something happens sooner, then they'll, then we can do something sooner.
Okay, well, I'm not a lawyer, so I, you know, but it doesn't, I don't think it says, it says it will take effect two years after the date of adoption.
And no earlier than, right?
Right.
Again, that can be, you know, I think the idea was that it could be modified if things happen quicker than, more quickly than we think.
I'm just questioning the language, I have no, I think, you know, where they're going is, is fine. The only, the only third question I have is, this does not permit, this does not prevent the city commission from designating, well, does this prevent the city commission if, for example, we wanted to... for example, we wanted to take trucks off Lake Shore Boulevard or Third Street, does this prevent us from doing that?
No. No, this is a truck route ordinance. We've all, we also have a truck traffic ordinance that deals with other streets in the city. As you know, we have one that limits tonnage on certain streets, and the commission has talked about limiting tonnage on other streets. That is not this ordinance. This is a truck route ordinance. That's a traffic ordinance, limiting a certain amount, a certain weight of vehicles.
I just wanted clarification on those points.
Commissioner Coyne?
Yes, your honor, I would like to continue Commissioner Stonehouse's presentation of the committee's work, which has been almost a year in coming to this. I would hope that my fellow commissioners would support this. I think it should be accompanied by a letter from the city manager asking for a response from the road commission and from the township's relationship with the road commission through public vote. My frustration has been, we have been dealing with administrators and the actual boards have really, I have no record of any public record of their taking a stance, one way or the other. And they need to, not just have an administrator say, oh, that's no good, or yes, we agree. It has to be done, and it has to be done as soon as possible so we can get the momentum going for funding and proceeding with the bypass. And we've struggled with this, trying to get an agreement that we think everyone will agree to, and we hope this is it. So I think it's important that we put a deadline. We're having a special meeting now. There's no reason why the road commission and the respective townships cannot have a special meeting and get this done by the 1st of September. So we can, so on the 8th of September, we can vote on it and approve it. The other issue is, to Don's point, we did not feel it was appropriate at this time to have a truck traffic ordinance. This has to be done. And once this is done, if it's agreed by everyone, then we are prepared to present to you a truck traffic ordinance. Yeah, so that's a good point. And I think those are the major issues that I would like to just bring up. So I would urge you to support this.
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Well, I too would urge my fellow commissioners to support it. And I think the main reason is that when we sat down with our working group that involved the townships, involved the county and all the key players, you know, they wanted, they wanted us to give them a two-year guarantee that we wouldn't do anything in terms of an ordinance closing off a north-south. We've done that. And we've also agreed that it's best if we have this contract with the county as well as the townships because the county really should be overseeing the entire bypass study and where it goes forward. Another point, staff, and I think Bill has offered, you know, his staff to work in any way possible to get the data to either, you know, one dean who's working on this, any of the private developers that need staff about our roads. So I mean, we, I guess we are contributing. I know Don brought up that one part in the agreement, you know, that we're not going to designate any, any expense, but we clearly are using our manpower to help get the project done. So, and again, you know, should we need to do something different, I think everyone's more than willing to step in.
Commissioner Coyne?
If I could, I did think of one other thing. In terms of funding, this, we all received three or four different options of funding for, depending on where this bypass, proposed bypass might occur, ranging from $18 million to $23 million. And we heard from our respective legislators that they are not going to even talk to us unless all the communities can agree. And this agreement then really is a message to them, if the road commission, Marquette Township, Nagoni Township, and the city of Marquette signed this, that is a message to the legislators that we all are together. And then it's in their bailiwick and their ball court to say, okay, let's work on funding. They are not going to do anything for just one governmental agency. We all have to be on the same page, wanting the same issue, solving this problem, which is an issue for all of us. And hopefully, if this is occurring, then funding may be worked on. It's certainly long from accomplishing. And, you know, originally, we were talking $10 million or $13 million, and when the $23 million came up, everybody took a big gulp. So we'll see. I mean, we could have this and no funding, and then it won't happen. So that's just reality. And there are ways of funding it, which they're aware of, and hopefully, they'll produce.
Commissioner Reynolds?
My only question is to somebody on the transportation committee. Do we have any kind of feeling about the other townships if they're like on board with this? I don't know if you know, but if, you know, anybody's made mention to that.
Yes. We, at the last bypass meeting, which was 11 September, that's when the transportation committee, our committee, offered this as a possible compromise. And that was accepted at that point. In other words, the support around the table was sufficient enough that the road commission, the Jim Waki, then took what we had proposed and fed it back in the form of the original document that you had the other day, or at our last meeting. So at that point, they were all in agreement.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, Commissioner Reynolds, when Mayor Protem says they were all in agreement, my point is, the comparable commissions and boards have never dealt with this, never voted on it, never voiced an opinion on the record other than what administrators say they feel this way. Now, you can see how hard it is for Aristovita to get a consensus opinion by listening to us, and if there's, that doesn't carry much weight in terms of, let's vote on this, yes or no. Who knows?
That has been a very frustrating part of this whole process, is that, you know, this commission has established a subcommittee of three elected commissioners to deal with the issue. And we were the only governmental body to do so. So the road commission isn't doing this, the county board isn't doing this, none of the townships are doing this, they're relying on staff help to carry the water. And you're not sure that you're really talking to somebody who has the authority to make the decision or is speaking, in fact, for the elected bodies. So that's frustrating, and it becomes more frustrating when you hold conversations with some of the elected and you find out that they like to be part of the process, that their thoughts are somewhat different than necessarily being presented by staff. So it's just frustrating. But nonetheless, I think this is a document that we need to forward, we need to keep the ball rolling, and we need not to be the problem.
I just have one comment on this. City attorney, and in the clause we were talking about where the cost shall not be the responsibility of or borne by the city or the board, I wonder if we were to drop "or borne by," and that would, that would allow any of the entities to contribute staff time or some costs if they so desire, but responsibility protects the parties from being required to make a payment. Technically, if you say "or borne by," we're prohibiting even us providing in-kind staff time theoretically. And I wouldn't want someone in the future to come back and say, well, hey, you signed this agreement and now you're violating it.
And obviously, you can put anything in there you want. It's not going to change the legal form of this document, but I think that...
"or borne by" wouldn't, wouldn't be, someone couldn't say, well, you're, you're having the engineering department work on this, you know, you're bearing costs and contravention of this agreement. Or am I just being picky unish?
Picky unish.
Okay. Fine. It's okay with me. And Mr. City Manager, if you may just ask them to approve the agreement by resolution, that would be sufficient.
Thank you, sir. That indeed is what I'll ask. My request today would be to have the city commission approve the recommendation of the transportation subcommittee and allow me to forward the city's counter, counter agreement as edited to the Marquette County Road Commission.
Commissioner Coyne?
So moved.
Okay, Mayor Protem Stonehouse moved. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, second by Mayor Protem Stonehouse to approve the agreement and submit it to the other governmental units. One question, if they all say this is fine, can we then approve it, or does this have to come back for approval once again?
It would, this is our counter offer. If they approve it, then we would formalize the document and it would come back for signature by all parties.
Anything further? Commissioner Coyne?
Are you going to put, do this by a certain date, or it will go on forever?
The note I took, sir, was, the suggestion was to have me write a letter that requires a written response based upon some type of action by the public body of vote, with the intent to have a response by September 1st, 2014, so that it could come forward for that recommendation for signature on September 8th.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse, anything further?
No, I think we've, we've talked the issue. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, second by Mayor Protem Stonehouse to approve the agreement and submit it to the other bodies for their approval. All in favor, say, oh, yes.
Yes.
Any opposed to the agreement, say no. The agreement has passed unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution to create a smart zone satellite. City clerk, I believe you have some background you could read on this?
Yes, your honor, thank you. The city has been working with the cities of Houghton and Hancock and Michigan Tech Enterprise Corporation to be designated as a satellite, a smart zone satellite. A requirement for this to happen is for the city of Marquette, Local Development Finance Authority, and the cities of Houghton, Hancock, and Marquette to enter into a joint agreement as required under Section 12B of the Local Development Act, Act 281 of 1986. At its meeting on August 13th, the city of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority approved the agreement by resolution. Over the next week, the cities of Houghton and Hancock will also approve the agreement. Once all parties have approved and signed the agreement, said agreement will be sent to the state, and this will hold our place in line to have the smart zone satellite application reviewed, fiscal effect done by this action, recommendation, approve a resolution to approve a joint agreement for the city of Marquette to become a smart zone satellite, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Much previous discussion, a lot of good work by the LDFA group, time to move forward, very positive.
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
I would agree with that, and just that we would like to get the application in as soon as possible, so.
Any other commissioners?
I guess I'd just kind of echo what Commissioner Ryan said. I think our LDFA is a dynamic group. They've done very good work for us so far with the able staff assistance of our CFO, and we're moving right along, so. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Kam Benzey, to approve the resolution approving the agreement between the city of Marquette, the cities of Hancock and Houghton, and the respective LDFA's. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion has passed unanimously. If there's no objection, we'll dispense with comments from the commission, comments from the city manager, and we'll adjourn this special meeting nested inside of our special meeting and continue with our budget meeting. Any objections? So we're now back into our budget session.
Mr. Stackwitz?
Thank you, your honor. We will move on to page 93, which is planning department activity. Our department is comprised of Dave Stempse, city planner, zoning administrator, Andrew is our planning and zoning official. We have administrative assistant that we actually use over four different divisions of community development, and then my time put into this. A lot of work that we've done in the past year, Third Street Plan was a big project. We did a climate change adaptation report. We participated in mobility management and transit coordination study. We also did assistance with 27 site plan reviews, 25 variances, eight plan unit developments, and a number of other things that if the community were interested in, they could look into that a little bit further. Going on to page 95, we had also provided some, we've taken a project out of here that would reduce our expenditures by $20,000 for the following year. And that comes in our professional and contractual. If you remember, when we had gone through the strategic plan, there were a number of projects that were identified through strategic development and community development. And in strategic development, we had talked about economic development, property sale, development strategy, Hartwood, and so on. Under planning and zoning, the strategic plan, the items that we had talked about were the zoning ordinance update and finishing up that work. And then also, we had an active transportation project. When we were asked to look at a reduction in this, when we look at the planning and zoning expenditures of what we actually have here to come up with 10%, the challenge for me becomes, how do I do that without having to give someone the unfortunate news that they, they're being laid off or not going to work here? And one thing that I was able to do is look for different alternatives, and it just so happens that I've been talking with the MEDC and MISTDA and looking at that a lighter, quicker, cheaper is the tame, the code word that they use for it, type of project where we would only be committing resources of staff time rather than actual monetary money for consultant work or match money for the same project in the Third Street corridor. So we're able to realize a $20,000 savings there and still address the strategic plan objective that was presented because as, we're still operating under a strategic plan, this is what we're going to do over the next year. We can still accomplish it, but we do have a significant cost savings in that. Any questions?
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
What account number is this reflected? Is it 801?
It's in the 801.
Okay. So we will be moving forward still with the zoning? Okay. Just differently.
Any other questions or comments?
And that's tied into the redevelopment-ready communities project as well. And, you know, even looking in at these reductions, we tried to allocate the resources in a, in a manner that if we're going to be making sure we're spending the money, we're going to double up on projects and get the best bang for the taxpayers' dollar. And by combining that zoning ordinance with the redevelopment-ready communities, even in a time of hardship, we're putting the resources forth to where it's going to bring something back to the community. The next page...
I have a question on your fact sheet where downtown development authority board meetings. Is that where the planner or planning staff attend the DDA board meetings, or?
We had, we had done that in the past. We had the planner attend those meetings.
Good idea. Yeah. Because it's, the DDA is a big part of the city, and I think the coordinate, extra coordination is well worth the time.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyne?
Mr. Stackwitz, where does the zoning enforcement person fit in? Is this in this thing, or?
The, it's not found on the program statistics sheet here, but we do have a zoning and code enforcement position that falls underneath this 721 planning account.
Are you planning on ever filling that?
Yes, we are. And I have been working with the AFSCME bargaining unit and human resources department over the course of probably the past four months with looking at some solutions that will not only replace that position, but also bring it to the point where it can help us in other areas of the department as well. And we're currently kind of going back and forth on that. I anticipate that we will have a viable solution that will... a viable solution that will be implemented within the next probably 45 days.
Was this an oversight that that isn't on there?
I believe so.
Okay.
Anything further from any commissioners? Okay, you may proceed, Mr. Stackwitz.
The last portion that I'll be discussing is on page 96, it's strategic development. This is our Economic Development, Planning, and Implementation Assistance. This is basically the city manager and myself. This is where particularly we deal with the distributing the funding opportunities, coordinating Next Michigan Development Act, some of the LDFA work, Satellite Smart Zone, and working as primary liaison for the retention efforts dealing with MGH and DLP. On page 97, for the expenditures, the largest expenditure that we have in terms of something that's not being related to personnel would be the professional and contractual. And this does reflect contractual work to address those strategic plan objectives that were agreed upon by the commission, and that's dealing with economic development, the property sale and development strategy, and the redevelopment-ready communities and some grant assistance.
Is there, you know, over the, like, I think last year we had an opportunity to cooperate with a, I think it was a U.S. Department of Commerce mission to, Bahrain or Qadar? Dubai. Didn't have either one. Would this, from this line item, would that support that kind of thing? Because I think, you know, even though it, in some cases, someone might think that's a frivolous expenditure, I think it's a, it's an investment in some, you know, some efforts that could well pay off for the city.
Well, we certainly could. I mean, that absolutely falls into it. We haven't yet, as a commission, had a discussion about how you would like to classify different kinds of activities like that. Is that a sister city committee activity? Is that an economic development activity? Is that a community development activity? They have multiple overlapping flavors. And so it really, it really depends kind of on each different one. We've had in the last year entreaties from Australia, Abu Dhabi, Croatia, Quebec, and we're maintaining our relationships with Japan and with Finland. And the character of those are all very different. The standing sister city relationships are, have really been more focused on culture exchanges and tourism. The consul general from Croatia expressed a lot of interest in that as a basis for forming a relationship, but then went on to say that she'd like to explore that for potential mutual economic development. Same thing with Abu Dhabi, in the way their business development manager spoke to us about their long-term strategy for port development and what they were doing to try to become a more interconnected city around the globe. So every one of those kind of brings with it its own, its own objectives and aspirations, and we don't really have a convenient catch-all other than the strategic, the strategic development account to really address those. I think it would be our intent for all those kind of less common entrepreneurial kind of activities to put those in here. We've been very focused on the foundation so far. As you're well aware, the last, last couple of years have been focusing on putting the data together that, that we need to make some smart decisions in this realm. We've been focusing our efforts on Smart Zones, on Next Michigan Zones, on regional prosperity initiatives, and building the network and the capacity to evaluate and to, and to participate in those kind of discussions. I expect that once those organizations are up and running, we'll continue to have a role to play. You mentioned a very energetic LDFA. I'm certain they'll put an equally energetic Smart Zone in place, and you'll probably see the need for Dennis and I to, to do the kind of things we've been doing diminish substantially. But that means we'll still then have to go back to the strategic plan, take a look at those priorities, the Community Master Plan, and and this would be the place where we would put the resources and time to move that forward. And we always have to be ready for the world asking us to respond. But we, to point in fact, we have not yet had a discussion where we've put all of those kind of activities in one single pot. You see some of them still in the legislative accounts, your travel, the commission travel for some of these activities. You see some of this still in the city administration pot, because some of it is subjective, depending on the meeting. And then you see some of it very specifically placed in the strategic development pot. You had questioned the other day the percentage of time that the assistant's community development manager was spending on senior services. I was kind of half asking, expecting you to ask me why. I think I'm only spending 20% of my time on this, given all the other things that we've had going on lately. It feels like maybe 120% of my time, but that just wouldn't work out from Gary's perspective. But they, they don't have a linear burn over time. They, they have their own cycles and their own ebb and flow.
I think we ought to have that discussion at some point, and so that we can respond to these things, these opportunities that arise in the future without having to wonder, well, geez, you know, get a consensus, the commission at this, at least at this juncture, so that you, you can respond and you can be, you know, as they, as they, the opportunities arise, that we can pursue those, so that, because I think they, they would provide some opportunities for the city in the future. And it would give you some directions that you're, you're not concerned that, you know, three or four commissioners are going to come down on you and say, well, what are you doing, spending money for this, or spending money for that?
Yeah, and actually, in that particular case, I would welcome it. You're aware, of course, and if the public doesn't know, the commission has my full, full calendar, has access to it all the time. One of the things I've got planned is to pursue the entreaty from Quebec this weekend to go, Commissioner Schneider had been up last year. I'm going up this weekend for a follow-up visit. It's not costing the city anything, because we have a resident of the community who's offered to, as a, as a consequence of their taking their independent action, they're planning on taking a vacation in Canada, they let me ride, ride along in their plane for free. So, so this is the kind of thing where I'd rather not to have to count on the, the good graces of strangers and members of the community and kind of cobble together response. A lot of the people we're meeting with are expecting more from the image our community suggests. And at some point in time, I could imagine this will be a topic where, if we're successful, we're going to see a lot more need for those kind of resources being available.
Commissioners, any other comments? Mr. Stackwitz?
Okay, one more to go. Page 170. This is account 555. It's our stormwater utility. We're tied in to this through Jim Compton, who is our hydrology engineer for the city. I should note that I didn't mention earlier that kind of wraps up our total revenue and reductions that are almost $200,000, is that Jim and myself opt out of the employee health insurance, which is also a savings of almost $30,000. And that kind of rounds out and completes full circle on that. And we, we don't do it for any principle or anything else. Our, our wives help us out with that, with their employments, but we.
We're dumping the cost on another organization's.
Yeah, exactly. But it looks good on paper, right? But it is, it is a savings. Within our stormwater utility, generally, I believe the question that, if we skip to page 173, that comes up as we go through the, the expenses each year, is generally the professional and contractual. We've got the SWP contract work allocation projects, a special necessity. Previously, we had just given them X amount of dollars per year. We're allocating, anticipating $20,000 of work to be done for us in the coming year from that organization, and we treat that on a contractual basis. So it's invoice for actual work done, and so on and so forth. It's no longer just a, what would be considered a donation.
How much do we have budgeted for that? $4,000?
Oh, yeah.
Not going to ask for much work for them, from them, then?
Yeah, what Dennis is pointing out is the $20,000 is up in the construction at the top of the expenses. The 555, 459, 801, and there's a project number, so there is $20,000 allocated for them. And then at the bottom, under Administration, the $4,000, that's to cover, you know, audit expenses and those kind of things that we have to allocate to these funds. So thank you, Dennis, for even clarifying that for me.
No problem.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and commission, for your time this morning.
Thank you. Pardon? Should we get more money? No, unfortunately. Unless we could take this, take the rainwater and sell it to Kurt.
Your Honor, at this time, would you like a five-minute break, or would you like us to continue?
Yeah, a five-minute break would be good.
Thank you.
Get some coffee. I said 1 o'clock. Oh, okay. Proceed?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the interest of not playing favorites with my department heads, let me give a similarly laudatory introduction for Superintendent and Director Goodman. Let me maybe couch it this way. Of all the things people never see, or the things that they usually want to get rid of, Director Goodman is the one who bears most of that burden, carries most of the water, so to speak, every day. And he's been with the city, I believe he, he or Chief Angeli are the longest-serving
Ever since last century.
current department heads. He came on board around 1980 originally, and has been instrumental in a lot of things, not just the smooth operation of the water and wastewater systems, but helping my personal transition. He's a wealth of knowledge of things that have gone on in the past, and in many cases, for as frustrating as it is for Gary and I to manage his shorthand, because he has decades more practice in some of these things than we do. More importantly, he's, thinks deeply out of the box, and is always trying to look for the best value for the residents and find the smartest way to get things done. And one really clear example of that is I had asked him to step up this year to help me continue the transition of staff that we started four years ago. When I first came on board as city manager, we had 15 department heads. And since that time, with Kurt stepping up, we're down to seven. And we were able to do that through consolidating some of the responsibilities of the Superintendent of Water/Wastewater with some of the other departments that manage Public Works, and hopefully we'll be able to keep on that trend as trying to find the most cost-effective way for managing all of the city's assets as we possibly can. But after 33 years in government, to take on the responsibility for that kind of transition speaks to the character of Kurt. It's something that he recognized was going to be a heavy lift. It was something that if, if it's not done, and we're continually trying to reinforce those improvements, they won't get done. And I can tell you that since he's taking that on, it's greatly reduced the burden on the rest of the department heads, on the city manager's office. He's been very effective as a watchdog, trying to make sure that our agreements that we have with our neighbors, whether it's for routine services or for projects, are, are maintained with aggressive oversight, that we're getting what we're paying for, that we're getting things when we need them. And even once in a while, when stuff like your entire water infrastructure freezing up and having to be thawed out, pipes bursting and things like that occurs, he's been the one right out front, making sure we have what we need to get it to the state, to get it to the president, to make sure that folks know what we need to keep service going and to meet the expectations of our residents. So Kurt's doing an outstanding job. It's my pleasure to introduce him and ask him to go through his part of the budget.
Thank you, city manager. Proceed, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you, commission. I look forward to opportunity to present a few budgets today, this morning. I want to thank a couple key staff members, Scott Kam Benzey, Superintendent of Public Works, and Eric Steeman, Facilities Superintendent. Also, we did use the same philosophy, you know, the baseline budget strategy. One thing that we did, I've done this year is I really involved everyone, everyone from the superintendents to the supervisors, and even the plow drivers, or the people in the trenches. You know, seeking input from them is a, is a, I think, a very good thing, because, you know, you can't see everything, and the frontline workers offer excellent suggestions. So that's one thing we're really doing, is incorporating their knowledge, and trying, if we need to change something, we're going to do it, for the best interest of service, service levels. Once again, the budget's being presented. Of all the budgets, all the staff is being retained. We tried to, most services are retained at the same level. The budgets, the water sewer budget's being recommended as a 5% increase. So, all in all, pretty much a status quo. We did look at 1213 budget year as sort of a benchmark in putting together the 1415 budget, of course, with some overall contractual increases, salary and wages, some of the fixed costs. So those did increase a little bit. I think the last thing, too, is that Superintendent Scott Kam Benzey, he, what we've done in the last five years is pretty much, the numbers you see, we do, we've been done, done a very good job, I think, of tracking cost. So if a worker's working in the water, it's charged to water. That system's been really, I think, it's done a very good job, you know, actually seeing the cost to each of the departments. So with that, are there any questions?
Look at wastewater treatment, is that what we're going to take for?
Oh, yeah, that's where I was going to start.
The fact sheet where one director, that should be, there must be a percentage there that's missing?
Correct, if we start on 174.
Yes. Authorized positions, it shows a director, but it doesn't show any percentage.
Oh, that's 30%.
Okay.
Once again, the fact sheet is a list of employees. We have a director, part-time, one supervisor, mechanic, eight operators, lab technician, or five operators. One thing, too, that all the personnel at the wastewater plant, they're trained to do. They're pretty versatile. They, you know, they can do the lab work, they could be a mechanic, they can, you know, be a supervisor in the absence of the supervisor, so they're very well experienced staff. One thing also is part of the wastewater plant change this year, with the completion of the network segmentation project, the wastewater staff is pretty much, has taken over total network responsibility for about 16 remote locations. So if, middle of the night, if a network switch goes down, we are the first responders, and we, we take care of that, those problems. It's been a, it's a learning, you know, staff is continuing to update themselves educationally-wise and experience, so we're, we're able to, offer that service, too, to the water distribution for the water tanks. So that's another thing that we're doing with changing, is we're working together our water, wastewater plants with Public Works. In the wastewater budget, revenues are listed. You'll You'll see revenues are down a little bit, which is sort of the trend, you know, a little bit reduced flows coming in. And also, a big, oh, on page 175.
Just to kind of clarify, this operation, it's a jointly-owned entity. The city owns 85%, Marquette Township 10%, and Chocolate Township 5%. The revenues from this department are derived a little bit differently than what you would normally see in a utility. It's really to cover the cost of the expenses. So, for this type of budget, we come up with the other revenues that aren't attributable to the three municipalities, and then we come up with the expenses. Then the difference between the other revenues and the total expenses are made up through flows, and also ownership percentage of the three owning municipalities. And that's by formula, what you see under the request is what we anticipate that is going to be for each of the three owner municipalities.
Thanks, Gary. Could I ask a question on that? Obviously, our sewer rates are determined by our water rates, as far as how we pay as individuals, right?
Correct.
Is that how these revenue figures are also calculated?
The correlation between, if you look at the very top revenue line, where it says City of Marquette, $2.3 million, that line then flows, goes into the sewer fund under wastewater services. That's what we're purchasing from this entity to provide sewer services for the city. So, in that way, it does go into the rate structure for the sewer system. So, that's the best correlation I can make between this budget and the regular sewer fund city budget.
I guess my basic question was, you know, if water use is declining, then revenue coming into the sewer fund is also declining, is that correct?
Yes, that's basically true. Sewer bills are based on water consumption, for the most part. And we can get more into that when we get into those budgets. But this is the key part of the sewer fund, the 592 fund, this 590 fund, because what happens here goes into the expense side of the 592 fund. So, that's kind of what we're just trying to point out here. Then, once we get into the 592 fund, Curt's going to talk more about flows and that kind of thing.
I guess my real question was, how are the townships, how is their contribution determined?
It's all by formula. Some of it's based on flows. We track the flows that each municipality has, and some of it's based on ownership percentage as well, more the fixed cost. So, it's kind of a, it's a three-page spreadsheet I have that I plug all these numbers in, and it's, at the bottom, it spits out this number, but it's a big spreadsheet to get there. And the spreadsheet formula itself, you have to go through the agreement to pick out, you know, the different things. But this is the way that each municipality has agreed, that that's how the costs will be divided up.
All right, thank you.
This year, with the let runs in the township, did that give a big spike in the amount that came through their meter?
I'll have to let Curt.
Yeah, we did notice increased, you know, flows down to the wastewater plant, especially the City of Marquette. Those were absorbed by the city. The township didn't see huge spikes, but definitely Marquette. And of course, they were billed accordingly to, through the wastewater services under the sewer account.
Question. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yeah, a question, Curt. Marquette Township owns 10% of the water plant, of the treatment plant.
Correct.
How close are they to operating at 10%? Are they at 5%, 8%, 11%? Or are they within that parameter?
Yeah. What we do is, we do a 12-month rolling average. So, we do quarterly reports. Currently, they're about 8.2% or 82% of their capacity.
Okay.
So, they're, we're, on the average, are about 80% of the plant capacity. So, we're very comfortable where we are.
So, of their share, they're at about 82%?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had asked that question as part of the administrative review, and they're basically at capacity. They could have a, they could have a spike, and they would be temporarily at 100%.
Yeah, and that's why we do a 12-month rolling average. Back in April this year, Marquette went over 100%. A lot of it had to do with the let runs, and of course...
The other entities would actually have to own a little excess capacity to account for their peaks.
Yeah, there's a buffer there, I think. Chocolates at...
Because, you know, the township may say, well, gee, we only, we only, our average is only 82%. We should, we should only be 8.2 instead of 10. But if they do peak, they're responsible for that also.
Well, correct.
Let me roll one more, roll the hand grenade, I guess, then. We all recently learned, of course, that the co-op is doing a wonderful job of water conservation by capturing rainwater, using it for their internal use of water and non-potable, and then pushing that off into the sewage system. Since we actually have people pay for the sewage treatment based on their water usage, right?
Correct.
How are we accounting for, or what plans would we have for account for folks like that, that are gaming the system? I say that from two sides. I say that, first of all, looking at the co-op and the example of the co-op, and then I say it from a matter of public policy, as we may have university look at it and say, "That's a good idea. We're going to do that, too." How do we, do we have a plan in place? Do we have anything out there?
I just learned about this last week. I didn't realize the co-op was gathering the rainwater for non-potable use. I think it's an excellent opportunity, really take a hard look at, because the co-op could be the first one, and then, so I do think we definitely need to look at that. I don't have quite an answer at this time. Of course, I'll use my connections in other communities and see how they deal with it. There are communities that use a resident-equivalent user-type formula. You know, if you have, you know, two toilets or something like that, they might average. So, there is some mechanisms in place, but that's something we probably need to look at for...
Okay. I mean, my concern is really, because right now, we're all paying for what they're doing.
Correct.
And that's being passed on to other people, that cost. So, whatever mechanism you would choose to recommend, we need to make sure, obviously, it's fair and equitable, and I'm certain it would be. But, thank you.
Anyone else second comment? Fishers? Questions? Okay, may proceed, Mr. Goodman.
Moving on to page 177. This is the water fund. Once again, this is the enterprise fund, with revenues, balances, expenses. I did, if you want, maybe talk at this time about the trend of the waste, of the water decreases. I did provide a handout with a sort of a chart from 1997 through the current year, and put a sort of a trend line in there. So, that sort of represents what we're seeing right now, is a little decrease in water, water usage, which, of course, results in to less revenue. I believe in CFO, manager, manor, we represent about 50, 500. Mike's helicopter. All right. And once again, too, that we really look very hard at trying to keep, you know, expenses down and look for sources of revenue, but I, you know, at some point, you really got to say that, you know, this is what it costs to really run a first-class water utility. You know, I think the residents deserve the best, not only water quality, but also services to their, their homes. We are recommending a 5% increase at this time.
Protem?
May I again ask another loaded question, I guess? Marquette Township has 10% of the water capability, I think, of, or just of storm water, of the wastewater.
Just wastewater.
How close are we to, or they to, the contract amount we're required to sell to township?
There's no limit on what we can sell them.
We have an unlimited amount of water, we can sell them?
Oh, yeah, they, under water supply contract, you know, whatever water they need, we'll, we need to provide.
There is no cap on the water supply contract.
I thought there was a cap on the gallons of water, we would sell them at a given rate.
There is that. There is that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's no...
The discount.
They're limited only by the same limit we face, capacity of the plant.
Yeah.
19 million gallons?
I believe it's...
That's what 500,000 translates to 19 million gallons.
Correct. Once they hit a threshold with the settlement, then their rate is increased, and I don't have...
How much is the rate increase?
I don't have that right now.
I mean, do we set that rate, or is that the rate that's got to be commensurate with everything else in the system?
It's a 59% discount, I think, isn't it?
You're correct, yeah.
So, that, the discount would go away when they hit the $500,000 threshold of revenue, which translates to about 19 million gallons.
And every three years, by contract, we do an independent rate study, and that was done, I believe, two years ago, so that will be coming up again, and that looks at all costs.
Yeah, and that comes before the, both boards, the Township Board and the City Commission, and you get a chance to review it and change it, as you may see fit.
That can be done this next year, then? I think so, isn't it? Should be due. Yeah, because we had it.
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly when we had it.
I'll check on that. And then, I know usually every meeting, we always get, I always get the question of how we compare to other communities. What I did this year is I provided sort of a color-coded...
A comprehensive comparison.
Yeah, on one sheet. And one thing I apologize, the key numbers, the key columns look at is the blue and the green. Blue is water, green is wastewater. The column, there isn't a header there, it should be five, per 5,000 gallons. So, starting from the highest community, working down, I, the Marquette, I put in the recommended, proposed increases, where we would rate, and then also, number 55 is where we currently are. So, you'll see, we'll move up about five communities.
But that's if they don't raise their rates as well.
That's our thing. All these, I did not have a chance to call all these communities, but I'll guarantee you that I would say 80% of these communities have raised their rates more. So, I think we're in the middle. And also, another thing, too, we do provide, I think, Marquette does a pretty good job of, you know, services. It's hard to compare water sewer rates with other communities, because, you know, it's not really apples-to-apples based on services provided.
You mean like support services provided, or...
Support services and...
Response times.
Response time.
Okay.
And comparable infrastructure, you know, a lot of the townships don't have the extensive water and wastewater infrastructure we do. Many of them have residents on well water, many of them have residents on septic fields.
They don't have beach monitoring, which is, which is part of the cost of our sewer plant, is the beach monitoring is. Thank you for the study.
And I'll continue to update that, you know.
Any other questions, comments on this point?
Where are we?
I'm going to go into the, oh, page 181.
Okay.
Just talk a little bit about the revenues for the water, and then go into expenses. One thing, the water plant, basically, that operation's been very stable. We've been able to keep the cost of actually treating water pretty much, well, it has been stable, and so there, you won't see any real change there. Power is probably the biggest increase. And for water transmission, again, that's your distribution system. That's where we, all the maintenance, taking care of all the pipes, the water tanks, you know, to deliver water to your, to the residents. Again, we took a hard look at, you know, 2012 and, you know, 2013, and, you know, tried to keep the budget relative, stable, without diminishing services.
I have a question on, under revenue, where does the Marquette Township show up there?
They're under public authorities.
Public authorities.
Public authorities, okay. One thing, too, you know, when it comes to comparing all these communities, you know, we have a, we're budgeting 1.3 million for debt service, and 1.6 million for capital outweigh. You know, I think one thing we have managed to do in Marquette is to put all of our costs into the, into the utility, where I think some of these communities do not. And some have not undertaken the extensive upgrades, or maintenance, or repairs, actually, you know, replacing water lines in the ground, doing those kinds of things. And so, I think, I think it's, you know, important for people to understand that, that our water rates do cover the complete operation of the, of the water utility. Correct statement?
As well as taxes.
Yeah, that...
Because a lot of these, a lot of these communities don't have the payment of taxes that our charter has, or our utilities have.
But I'm saying, we, our costs are all in here.
Yep. I think it's interesting to note, too, that just watching the, you know, political pages in the paper, the number of fights and discussions in some of the communities over subsidizing, taking general fund money into the water fund and sewer fund to pay for those. You know, you see this constant transfer from general fund, and I think Commissioner Ryan makes a very good point, that we're self-sufficient, and I think that's a great way to be.
One thing on that, that study I gave, if you look at the far-right column, medium household income percentage, that's a, that's a percentage of the water, what it would cost a average household. So, that's sort of an interesting stat. But Commissioner Ryan is right, a lot of, that's why it's tough to compare communities, you know, water rates, because Marquette's been very aggressive, done an excellent job actually doing things and improving their infrastructure. And also, infrastructure's not only the pipes and the line, it's also your, you're like painting a mountain tank, you know, the water filtration. So, infrastructure includes everything it takes to get the water to the resident.
Of course, we did learn the other day, somewhere along the line, about the water membranes that didn't last 10 years, that CFO thought we should have bonded for over a shorter period of time.
Fisher Reynolds?
I just have one quick question, Kurt. When we went through the, we did the tour of the...
When we went through the, we did the tour of the water plant, we talked about the membrane replacement, and you have it as 1.1. Are you still hopeful at all that you'll be able to get that price down? We talked about that before. Not that it obviously needs to be done, I'm just curious.
Since that meeting, I was able to work with the manufacturer. Right now, I have an offer, a pretty firm proposal. The whole project would be $829,000. There is one, I have to work with the CFO on getting that done. They just would like a commitment before October 1st. So hopefully, that's something, working with the finance director and city manager, we'll be able to make that happen.
He's not going to let you spread it over 10 years again, though.
No, I learned my lesson.
One question I have, Kurt, is, and actually, I learned this at the Great Lakes Conference, it's amazing the number of cities around the Great Lakes that don't have separate stormwater and sewer systems. Like, just in the flood, the flood talk about in Detroit, their system isn't separate. So when you get a flood, and everything's going into one system, we're separate. A lot of these small communities, are they separate? Because I think Michigan kind of encourages communities to separate, don't they?
Yeah, I believe it's pretty much mandated now.
Except for the large ones, where it's just impossible for them to do it.
Back in the '70s, that was part of the huge push, when the EPA came out for all the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, that they did look at that separation. Marquette was very fortunate that they were able to separate all their systems. Believe me, that's a huge plus for, especially a community like Marquette on Lake Superior.
Right. But that's another cost that's built, although I think this is mostly small, so it's probably comparable in that regard. Like, I think Milwaukee and some of those large cities also aren't separated, so they're spewing into the lake, basically.
Right. What a lot of communities do, and those like Milwaukee, is they build these millions and millions gallons of reservoirs to hold the untreated stormwater back, so that when it stops raining, then they can feed it through the system. So the tunnels at these bigger cities, just to hold stormwater, is unbelievable.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, proceed.
Moving on to sewer, 183. Pretty much like the water fund, the revenues, we're recommending a 5% increase. Sewer charges are charged off the water meters. Again, we use the same strategy to try and use 12, 13-year for a budget benchmark. It's pretty status quo, again, providing the same level of service. Again, I think residents of Marquette are very fortunate to, be it a Saturday or Sunday, if they do have a problem, they can pick up the phone and there's usually a response. So, again, that's a pretty good service that Marquette offers.
Usually a response, or it's just usually a timely response? Or is that always a response, isn't it there?
A timely response.
Okay.
I could tell you some story. Again, the sewer budget is a few components. It's got the sewer operations. We have 12 lift stations throughout the community. One thing we did in 2004 was, we did a major upgrade of most of our stations, and that was an excellent time to do that project. The stations are in pretty good operation. We're doing three of the older, 35-year-old stations right now, so we'll pretty much be up to speed on the stations being for the next 20 years. If there's any other questions on that?
See any?
Okay, now, I guess I get to enter an area that I'm learning a little bit about, public works. But it's been a great education for me the last six months. I've learned a lot about the operations. Moving to page 62. Basically, City Hall, that's basically a cost, expenses to try and operate City Hall. We do have outside janitorial service here. Also includes, we're, hopefully, next year, we'll be entering into a contract with Johnson Controls to improve the HVAC system. So that's going to be brought, I think, I believe, in the commission, next commission meeting. That's budgeted for this year.
Commissioner Cohen?
Last year, we switched over to the independent contractor for cleaning, right? How is that working out?
I hear maybe some of the residents of City Hall, or workers, might --
I'll vouch, it's working out very well. At least my trash gets emptied now, so I'm very thankful for that. Just good, positive comments, I think it's working out very well.
Actually, I was looking around to see if Mike Angeli was here. He's been the most laudatory of all. The police station has never been cleaner. The floors are typically always fresh, where before, they weren't being maintained in a proper way. General, I think you've seen, because you certainly spend a lot of time here in City Hall, we're presenting the best possible face to the residents as they come in, so we're very satisfied with that.
Once again, it's one of those things in your career, you never know what you're going to do. But, again, cemetery operations, pretty status quo. We deferred a little bit of maintenance, you know, with the challenge to try and reduce 10%, but all in all, the services there will be status quo. I just want to say, Paul Albert, our cemetery section, I tell you, he takes great pride in the operation, and a lot of compliments are made on that cemetery, on how it's kept up.
Did you budget some fee changes here?
No. Oh, I think, we did remove one. We used to have a fee for putting up a tent, but we removed that because the funeral homes offer that service.
Questions?
Again, nothing really stands out on expenses.
Should we move on to DPW, then? Page 83.
Okay, DPW, once again, that's our main, it's called like a home account. That's where a lot of the numbers come from. And then, out of that home account, they're assigned to other department activities, be it parks and rec, be it cemetery, be it streets. So that's really your base home account, we call it. One thing we did, you'll see a little increase in wages. We put a little bit more wages in the public works lineup. That will give us a little bit more flexibility as we go through the year on where to assign the cost. So even though, also, the reason for that increase, 30% of my wage has been charged to that, and then we put all the contractual increases in that at this time.
When you say you put more into wages, is that, are there more people that you're bringing in, or how is?
No, it's just moving people from some other accounts in there. So there's no, the bottom line is all the, I believe, 56 employees. The wages will be the same.
It's just a change in how they were allocated. Yeah.
Well, just one, you know, the capital outlay, I mean, the breakdown, without going all these, through all these other funds. I mean, you have very little listed here.
Correct.
Most of it's listed under motor vehicle equipment, or in some of the other categories.
Yeah, that's correct. We put the capital under whatever department it falls on.
Because there's five or six departments that are kind of interrelated here, I would guess, right?
Right.
Okay.
This one, we really took a hard look at, with the challenge, trying to reducing to 10%. Again, we took the philosophy, is there something that we may be able to defer until next year? And the big cut here was capital improvements. Typically, we've been putting $100,000 in for sidewalk replacement. This year, we don't have any, there's zero money at this time for sidewalk replacement.
If revenues come in later, it would be reinstated.
Yeah, this is another example, Your Honor, where when we sat down and talked about it, we have some statutory requirements to maintain sidewalks, and we're going to do that. This really speaks to what our annual kind of construction would be, and at this point, the construction season's basically over. So we thought, for all the kind of things that we would normally do, we'll put that in an out-year tranche instead, when the money firms up. So we didn't need to start out with that in the baseline.
And if there is a sidewalk that needs attention, it'll be taken care of regardless.
Absolutely, yeah.
Very good.
There is money for maintenance and repairs, it's just not the typical $100,000 we would put in for actual sidewalk replacement. So we do have maintenance money, just not replacement money at this time.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I would just say, I hope that goes back in the budget. I've said this many times, I've probably walked every sidewalk in the city of Marquette. And I've also walked sidewalks in some other cities where you can hardly get down the street. And I think the reason it's that way is because, almost religiously, every year, the city has spent $100,000 to repair sidewalks. And so, I just, I just hope we don't get out of that habit. I think it really makes a difference. And if we're truly going to be this walkable community, then we have to make the sidewalks walkable, and I think this is really, really a good expenditure. Because it creates a whole system, where people go out and look, and they make decisions, and they find places that need to be fixed, and it's not just throwing $100,000 at the problem. It's been a very systematic approach, so.
Yeah, we completely agree, sir. It's not our intention to take it out of the budget, it's just out of the baseline portion.
T1, T2, and T3.
Page 115, major streets.
Can I ask one question about sidewalks, quick? And it's probably in a different line item in budget, but I know one concern, when the schools heard that we're cutting a lot, will we be offering the same amount of sidewalk plowing?
Yep. This budget does not reflect any, you know, it does take in consideration, the sidewalk plowing at the same frequency. We made sure that we're not going to be cutting any of that. I think that's important, too, especially by the schools.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The schools could contribute something to us for one.
Yes, they could, yeah. But with Grave Red opening up as an elementary, I mean, the plows go down Front Street nonstop, and it's like seeing the little people kind of, it was just this thought we all had in our head, like.
Proceed.
The next two budgets, major streets and local streets, what you see is very status quo. It's to maintain the same budget levels, and again, try and provide the same service. Another thing, too, that we're doing, is we're really taking a hard look at how we do things. Again, I'm trying to get total involvement from all the staff, you know, from the plow drivers that are on the streets. If there's any way that we can improve efficiencies, we're listening, and we're going to continue to strive to do that. Because it's amazing, you learn stuff every day, and if you do find something that might work better, let's try it.
Any questions on major local streets, commissioners, comments?
Just one comment. I have heard a lot of feedback, whether it's been repeated, or people caught it the first time, though, just on the snow summit, I think people appreciated, how does a complex system of plowing our streets and sidewalks and all that work? You know, I think a lot of people think that they should be first in line, but then realizing the major arterials and going from there, it puts a perspective in. So, again, if you ask me, I think the most annoying thing are the cars that are parked overnight, or the plows have to go around gently.
Yeah. I think, too, that maybe, I think we'll look at doing something like that again. You know, it could be just something a little bit more informal, open house, but you're right, I think education, once people realize why their snowbank wasn't moved, that's probably the calls I get most frequently. You know, so that's, you know, that would be, again, education always goes a long way.
City manager?
Only to put out to, it's been said a lot, but how much we depend on the state for financing, we feel pretty confident with the numbers we're recording here. Many of you have had a chance to meet with Representative Keeble and Senator Casperson's staff to get a sense of what their priorities are, and you'll be coming back to the under recess. You're probably well aware, the transportation bill failed prior to recess earlier this summer. Whether it be by 7% or by the total state, we need to make an identity. Based on our meetings, both the executive branch and legislative branch officials, we're pretty confident they're going to make this priority this fall. So we're reasonably confident that those numbers are possible in the next five years.
Any else, commissioners?
Page 124, sanitation. Again, this budget represents --
Fancy name for garbage.
This represents solid waste services, all, everything from your door-to-door pickup to your compost site, and your cycling program, and then your rubbish drop-off that is scheduled. We're presenting a budget right now as exactly what we feel we're comfortable moving forward. We have bids out right now for solid waste services. One thing we did this year is we separated them, so I've got three different bids, one for curbside services, a second one for city facilities, a third one for your rubbish drop-off. So what that will do, hopefully, is have additional competition within the areas, or maybe the -- maybe the outer area contractors, so they can bid on either one of them. So we'll have a little bit more flexibility. In the past, they've been bid out as a single contract. So, for instance, if one, we can choose one contractor for one component or the other. So those bids are due the twenty-sixth of August, so we'll have a little bit clearer recommendation how they affect the budget. But, you know, we, we look at some pretty good, stable pricing at this time.
I haven't been by lately, but is any plan to replace those recyclable things in front of the service center that are very difficult to use that were provided by the...
Okay, that's, that's probably one of the things, those had been replaced about a month ago.
Okay, good.
One thing we need to, City Manager and I, we've been talking about this, we need to get that word out a little bit better. So right now, we do have a, a full dumpster container for fiber and a full one for ridges. So if you're driving by at two o'clock in the morning, and you need to get rid of your ridges or cardboard, you can do it.
Good idea, very good.
You're unlocked?
It's unlocked. And, and, and I've been checking it, on that, all the time. But we find out the residents who do actually use those are very courteous, and we don't, we are not mining any, quote, "garbage."
And I, and I do know that there are many citizens who are upset with the way our trash is being picked up occasionally in town. And I would be one of them. And it's not your fault, it's our contractor. But one day, my fibers were out, and I found eight different pieces of fiber scattered around the neighborhood. You know, and sometimes you throw things, not confidential in there, I'm very careful about that, but, but, you know, it's just sloppy work, you know, it's just, and I know this is something we're focused on, and I think many people would be happy to see a much better level of service being provided by whoever the contractor is.
Yeah, I think that's important, that, I know, I've been working closely with City Manager's office, we need to really, you know, improve on that. And believe me, that's something that's definitely, we want, we'll be doing.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me maybe take the opportunity to, to set a context for this. And Director Goodman had mentioned a lot of things that would be pretty easy to slip by if people weren't paying close attention. But we've been living under, basically, a garbage monopoly for many, many, many years. And potentially, what that means, not only is that we're paying higher prices and subject to the dictates of that monopoly control, but we're also not really getting any benefit back from what now is a big issue in sustainability. Essentially, when you're putting garbage out on the curb now, you're putting a bag of money out there for somebody. The, the kind of recycling that we're seeing returns a lot of value to the people who are willing to go out and, and do that as a business. And so our existing contracts, our existing relationships, haven't allowed the community to recapture that kind of value. And for the people who recognize that value, and it's been the subject of a tremendous amount of public interest, if you go out and watch things like the Discovery Channel or CNBC or other things, where they're talking about the business of waste management, you get a chance to see just how much money there is that you can recover. It's almost like a mining operation. And so the concept of going through and trying to, both from a policy perspective, free yourself from the consequences of monopoly economic control, and then to try to find a way to also return some of the value of recycling back to the community, have been pretty compelling. And in the past, the commission's been very supportive, and we're grateful for it, as part of our sustainability, to extend the life of the landfill and return more of that value to the community. So we're not just dealing with, on the surface, what you see as a relatively simple thing of throwing your water bottle out and hoping that it's not blowing around outside the street, but you're really seeing the pointy end of the, of this, this profound shift in, in policy that the community's trying to pursue. Now, anytime there's shifts like that, there are equal incentives to try to prevent that. You know, we've noted from many residents that they're not getting the same kind of service that they got before the city decided to take these actions. And I'm certain, if you go out and talk to people who may have incumbent interests, you know, they'd be quite happy when those irate citizens come in to say, yeah, you know, it sure would be nice to be able to go back to the old way, wouldn't it? And there are lots of incentives to try to make sure it would be very comfortable to go back to the old way. But we're not at a point where we feel comfortable suggesting that. We, we understand that we need to ramp up and make our residents better aware of how these policies are going to improve their lives. We need to make them better aware of how that recycling program is going to work, and make sure they understand and that we understand what they're looking for, so we can meet those expectations. I'm confident Director Goodman is going to be able to ramp up our, our communications and our promotion of that, and to be able to respond also to making sure we're adjusting things to meet people, people's needs. I also like to point out that I know Chairman Yell at the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority is equally committed to making sure we have the best possible experience and best possible value. We'll be attending their meeting next Wednesday. He's requested a joint work session with the, the city commission to get everybody on the same page as, as, in terms of what the project status is, and what our expectations are, and how we're going to move forward. But it's, again, more than just the trash blowing around on the, on the streets on occasion, and the unhappy customers. We didn't really see a ramp-up of that kind of activity until we took the action to change the policy. And from that point forward, then, really understanding all the potential reasons why that might be going on is critical to understanding how important it is that we succeed in our goal. So I'm confident Kurt's got his, his focus on this, and I'm looking forward to the joint commission and Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, where we can get more robust discussion around the issue.
Commissioner Coyne?
Mr. Goodman, could I ask you, on page one twenty-two, the authorized positions, I don't understand the zero and then the, the next, underneath that is people. What's, explain that to me. I'm maybe not making myself clear. We have one in the middle of the page, number, Roman numeral three, authorized positions. We have a section with a whole bunch of people, but we have nobody employed there, and then the bottom one. What is, that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
I think if you just take the, if you look at the line, it says October two thousand fourteen through two thousand fifteen, I think that's the budget number. And the actual number put in the budget was a hundred and two thousand. I'm, I'm not even sure why that line is there, but the actual positions are based on the column to the left.
I think that one of those is just shown, so you can see the total cost of those positions, like an SPR and SEO and...
Oh, I see, yeah.
These are, are the portion that's actually charged, the effort, the endeavor.
Okay, I have one other question. In your RFPs, we have not had any discussion policy-wise. Are you considering just keeping the curbside collection with bags rather than any other way? Or is that up to the potential vendor to make a proposal as to how to do it?
Yeah, currently, the RFP does, is going with the bag system. Where, like, once again, we're, we're always looking for, maybe doing different, you know, they can always put an alternate way to do things. I know if we did automated with a, you know, system, that would require quite a bit of capital investments by the contract caller. I don't think we're at that point yet. I know Scott's been, you know, doing a lot of researches, research about other ways to, to do, you know, garbage collection more efficiently and cost-effective. But I think as technology changes, as, you know, as we change the way we do things, there, those should be looked at and explored.
Another question I have is, if another vendor, other than Waste Management, makes a bid, what, where are they going to have the collection, you know, what's, what's, how's that going to work?
Yep, that, that's an excellent question. What we did is, we did allow for, you know, the, the contractor doing daytime collection. So what they would have to do is collect the, you know, curbside, during the day, and take a direct haul to the landfill, because landfill hours are, I believe, seven to three. So that, that's the only way we could have gotten, you know, competitive, you know, you know, bids, is to allow them to, you know, to, you know, bid on it for daytime collection.
So would that eliminate the collection system station in the city?
Well, if Waste Management did not get the contract, it'd be up to that company to decide, you know, to keep it open or not. Again, also, we'll, we'll carefully review these proposals, so it's going to take, they're going to be a little bit difficult to, you know, hopefully, we'll get different proposals from different companies.
Thank you.
But evaluation will be a key, key there.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Commissioner, for raising those points. Those speak to exactly the challenges of trying to deal with the monopoly. You know, right now, Waste Management owns the only transfer station in town. And if we, if we look at, kind of, for whether it's for the waste or whether it's for the recycling, the kind of investment that companies have to make to be able to, to handle those kind of streams, the, the simple capital cost we would impose in the bid could end up creating only one possible bidder anyway, and that's the ones with the deepest pockets, and that's the monopoly. So how, how we move forward initially to try to, to deal with that market issue is part of what we're taking into consideration. If we did only nighttime bids, again, that's dependent upon having a transfer station, and only the monopoly has the transfer station. And so how we, how we balance that out with the service we're looking for is one of the key parts of the evaluation that Kurt was speaking to. That's part of the key trade space that, that we're looking at. Independently, though, of the actual management of the bid and kind of dealing with the economic issues, we do have Superintendent Camp Benzie looking at what our ideal outcome could be. So that's something he's been working with, the same groups that you've seen come before the city commission, who've expressed an interest in helping be our advocates in the community for making that happen. Do we use blue bins? Do we use blue and yellow bins? Do we continue to use bags in lieu of bins? And do we go to full automated systems, where a truck might come along and pick up the bin or not? I mean, those are, those are all the kind of blue-sky, blue-sky discussions that are going on to try to get us, to try to close the gap between what our ideal solution might be and the challenges we face with the market as it currently is.
Any other commissioners, any other comments? Further, Mr. Goodman?
Turning to page one ninety-nine.
Okay.
The municipal service center.
Cool.
Building down the street. Pretty much status quo for this operation.
Okay, any questions, comments, commissioners, on the municipal service center? Okay, shall we move to...
Page two oh-two, motor pool.
Motor pool.
One change we've had in this department, Eric Steeman has, has been given the responsibility to oversee this apartment, this apartment, department. So he's sort of taken a, sort of a fresh look, coming up with maybe some different ideas. But again, motor pool's a critical department for the city to maintain services. We do have an aging fleet of equipment. Again, the, the staff over there does an excellent job keeping them running, keeping them maintained, and it's a huge, you know, part of a successful services for the residents.
When we took the tour over there, I guess I was somewhat surprised at the fact that the equipment may not be as A-one as I thought it might be. I'm sure they work hard to keep it up, but I mean, it, as you said, it's aging. And I think in recent years, we've, you know, we've not, we've not perhaps replaced some equipment as we would have in the past. I, I think it's just an observation that, you know, it looks like something the city's going to have to face up to at some point in the future.
I think this is one of those that, you know, we're going to really take a hard look in the next couple of months. And I think you're right, I think it, some of the, especially the bigger piece of equipment, you know, for like a three hundred thousand dollar plow, you know, one or two, you know, right now, we could recommend we need two of them. But let's, let's try and, we're going to do our homework and really come up with a little bit, especially for the bigger piece of equipment, that's really critical for the, the city. And, you know, we'll look, we always look at, you know, repairing versus new. I think that, you know, the life cycle of them, there are some, you know, different manufacturers of equipment. Sometimes we, you know, the low bid isn't always the best. So I think that needs to maybe look, look at a more clear way to evaluate purchasing those. That's fair to, you know, both, for all companies. But I do think, you know, taking a hard, especially for the bigger piece of equipment.
Yeah. And then the motor pool fund, is that what it's called, Gary, or what is that?
The reserve fund?
Reserve fund?
That's at a million dollars.
Still at the million dollars, okay.
Yes.
But we've said before that one fire truck would eat that up or something, I think.
Correct. And whenever I see Chief Belt, he kind of tiptucks at me that, you know, it will, sometime in the future, but we still have time to plan for that, so it won't hit us overnight.
So I guess, you know, we, we haven't increased that fund in, in a few years.
Yeah, and when we're commenting on the motor pool, I think, like, say, well, we're getting all the plows ready to go this winter, doing a thorough assessment of them, and we'll have a little bit better idea come, you know, March or April. And that's when, if we really, you know, staff really, really thinks that we're going to need a new plow for next year, that's when we'll, you know, bring that information, that request, you know, for, you know, for consideration, you know, in, you know, April or May, so that we do have that plow approved by next year.
What else, do you have a comment?
Curiosity, do we use an oil analysis program?
Yes, there is one done.
So we're not changing the oil just on schedule, we're changing it based on the results of the analysis?
Right, and that's sent out. I, I don't know the exact frequency, but I know those are sent out and reports are coming.
Thank you.
Do we use synthetic oil, then, or?
Depends on the equipment.
Some we do, some we don't. Because I know, like, on, on our buses, we'd go sometimes thirty, forty thousand miles before we changed. We'd change filters and do oil analysis, but we didn't have to change the oil because it came back okay. Although they, they know exactly what they're selling, so there's, the price of the product is a lot more expensive as a result. Well, we've come to the end of our agenda. Do you have nothing further, City Manager, so we'll... Oh, we do. Okay.
Yeah, we've kind of had to change the schedule as to when the budget's going to be adopted, so we're asking if you could have a motion to set a public hearing for the August twenty-fifth meeting?
Sure. Is some, Commissioner Coyne?
So, so moved.
Court, second. Commissioner Ryan? It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to set the public hearing on the budget for August twenty-fifth. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passed unanimously. Anything further? Anything further, commissioners? I'd just like to thank the City Manager and staff. Again, we've had enlightening experience, so. Without anything further, we're adjourned.